I'll show you the email.
And it's helpful.
Give me five hundred dollars for a class of your information.
Bring us a sign up there. Yeah, we're cool over there.
This is what it classed with on Facebook. The guy's name, where he lived, his phone number, his date of birth, social security number, driver's license number, Toyota key, everything.
He just moved in.
Yeah.
They sent it to the police. Yeah, I should, he sent me the email with the guy, this person said, you know, cough up in the hotel.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
This is a friend of mine. Seventy-third Airway, he lives up north.
Here she is.
I got the email that your choice here was to please, they send it, they give me five hundred bucks, I'll pass all your personal information.
Oh, I get it. All right, I said, go ahead.
Yeah, that's what he told, I mean, look at, he put it all down.
Call meeting in order, y'all please rise. May I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening? And please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Brennan.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
I get my line.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Scully.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Uh, and this would be the reading of the official certificate of results for the consolidated election held on April first, twenty twenty-five. Mayor Robert Strauss, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five votes. City Clerk Shannon Hervey, two thousand three hundred and forty-six votes. Treasurer James Demicki, one thousand eight hundred votes. Alderman Ward one, Dan Brennan, five hundred and eighty-five votes. Alderman Ward two, Jack, excuse me, John, Jack Clifford, uh, three hundred and thirty-nine votes. Alderman Ward three, Heather Begley, five hundred and fifty-one votes. Alderman Ward four, Patrick Scully, six hundred and sixty-five votes.
Agreed, first year. Congratulations, all the winners.
Yeah.
Any special presentations we have tonight? Not that I'm aware of. Okay, under the consent calendar, we've got the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting, which was held on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. The approval of the payroll and the voucher list for the period ending May second, twenty twenty-five. I need approval for the request for the Knights of Columbus to per, uh, permit solicitation for their annual Tootsie Roll Drive at one hundred twenty-seventh and Harlem, one hundred twenty-seventh and Ridgeland, Harlem and Rotted E3, and Ridgeland and Rotted E3, in Palis Heights in accordance with the city code on September nineteenth and twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Looking for the approval of a proclamation announcing the month of May twenty, twenty twenty-five as motorcycle awareness month, and also the approval of the proclamation announcing the fair, uh, National Safe Boating Week on May seventeenth to twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
So, second.
Moved by Alderman, uh, Scully, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
All right. Under my remarks, just like to congratulate everyone, as we mentioned, to the winners of the election, and just looking forward to the next four years, uh, working together to, for the betterment of our city. Uh, later on in the meeting on the new business, uh, we'll have, uh, Judge, uh, what's your name, uh, Christopher Waller, uh, swear everybody in, and, uh, go with that. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report tonight.
All right, City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mayor. I have the treasurer's report for the month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. General Fund began the month with four million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. Revenues came in of two million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one fifty-two. Expenses from the general fund were nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and nineteen. Other source use, eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund, six million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, forty-five. The total of all city funds began March with twenty-eight million, seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty. Revenues totaled three million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven forty-seven. Expenses for the month were two million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight. Other source use, hundred and sixteen, two oh five, giving an ending balance in all city funds for the month, twenty-nine million, two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Need a motion to approve the treasury report?
So move.
Moved by Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Second by Alderman Brennan, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose, motion carries. City attorneys not here, any communications, anyone has tonight? Yeah, Mayor?
I think, uh, all of us probably would like to extend condolences to the family of Tom Brown. Tom, our city attorneys, he had a loss in his family, and, you know, we've all worked with him for a long time, terrific guy, and, uh, it's a sad situation.
Yeah, that's, he's there right now for a few reasons, so, thank, thanks a lot, Mike. Um, see, citizens wishing to address the council? Finance Committee, Alderman McGrogan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's no, uh, numbered item on there, I just want everybody to know that, uh, we are working on a variety of things, it's not, uh, that we're not, uh, discussing things, we're trying to figure out ways to, uh, uh, save, save the taxpayers' money, um, keep the budget balanced, uh, work on different programs, and, um, you know, we'll have more to report as we go along, um, during the, uh, upcoming months. Right now, we're in, um, quite a few things that are in the planning stage, so, with that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Bassow, public safety?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I have a couple items on the agenda this evening. Item number ten, motion to approve the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Chevrolet Tahoe patrol vehicles from Curie Motors, Curie Chevrolet, for a total cost of one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. These vehicles were ordered in two thousand twenty-four, but there was a shortage at that time.
Moved by Alderman Bassow, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brennan, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Item number eleven, motion to the Director of City Attorney to draft in ordinance to sell two surplus vehicles, a twenty-eighteen Toyota Highlander, VIN number as printed, former Task Force vehicle, and a seized two thousand thirteen Volkswagen Jetta, VIN number as printed.
Moved by Alderman Bassow.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGrogan, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number twelve, motion to approve the purchase of a special-use vehicle, an unmarked car for the new detective sergeant, a two thousand twenty-five Tesla Model Y. The cost of the vehicle is fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, but we will be applying for an IRS rebate of seventy-five hundred dollars. The end cost of the vehicle will be forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Moved by Alderman Bassow, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, uh, Begley, discussion, roll call?
Mr. Mayor, make sure you get insurance on it, Carrie, you might need it.
Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye. And finally, um, I'd like to remind everyone that this Saturday is, um, I believe it's called Send a Meal. If you can, uh, leave some food, non-perishable food donations at, donations at your mailbox, the mailman will pick them up and deliver on them as needed. Also, and, uh, in the continuing, uh, battle of scams, I was alerted today of a new scam, uh, an old message. Again, uh, someone is, uh, contacting individuals pretending to be, um, uh, utility service employees, and telling them that their service will be cut off if they don't make a payment immediately. It's the same scam, but with a, with a different title, and they're, they're trying to get you to give them information so that they can get into your accounts. So the best thing to do, again, is to hang up and call your, uh, utility provider with the number on your bill to verify, uh, that something is awry, or you could simply ask a question of the scammer, uh, such as, what was my last payment and when did I make it? And obviously, they won't have that information. So, uh, beware, be alert, and, uh, thank you, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Municipal grounds of br, uh, property, Alderman Begley.
Thank you, Mayor. First up on my report this evening, I have a motion to approve McLeod Aquatics to treat algae and kara at Lake Catherine with Public Works, and Lake Catherine splitting the cost fifty-fifty in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-three cents.
Moved by Alderman Begley.
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I have a motion to approve the brick paver maintenance on the east and west sides of Harlem Avenue from one hundred and twenty-third Street to one hundred and twenty-four Street with country landscape and supply incorporated in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley and seconded by Alderman Clifford, any discussion, roll call?
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Thank you, and that's the end of my report this evening, Mayor, thank you so much.
Planning and zoning, Alderman Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before I make a mo, uh, 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 proceed to, uh, item fifteen, um, I want to make a comment, uh, as to the, uh, forwarding of this, uh, uh, topic. The planning and zoning meeting met, uh, a week ago Tuesday, or that the last session was abbreviated, uh, only by, uh, uh, consensus of, uh, Alderman Lewandowski and myself, um, and I don't, there was no, uh, we didn't have, uh, much opportunity or didn't have, uh, choose to have much discussion on this, um, and I'd like to consider, um, this topic be brought to the committee as a whole, uh, before we take, or, or in consideration of this, uh, motion, um, as an alternative.
I'll second that.
First, I gotta make the motion.
Okay, you gotta refer it.
You could, you could refer it back to the, uh, the committee, and then... Well, the mo, I, I believe the motion still needs to be read, we gacked upon the motion.
Okay.
No, if you're gonna refer it to, you can, you can refer it back to the committee without...
Before the motion?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to refer it back to committee.
But make the committee a committee of the whole.
Committee, uh, to the committee of a whole, uh?
At, at your committee meeting, yes.
And I'll second.
Okay. All right, it doesn't need a, it doesn't need a vote, so...
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
Before we go to committee of the whole and try to talk about this, uh, maybe it won't be necessary to go back that far, because I, I read that, I read that report or that plan proposal, and I had to read it a couple times to try to figure out if I was, um, reading it correctly, and I had to ask others questions about it to see if I was interpreting it correctly. Whoever put that together, it's a, it's a work of wonder, and I congratulate them because I could, I could stay awake for weeks trying to figure out something else to include in that, but I don't think they've missed anything. However, I think that, um, instead of proceeding with that plan as it is written, we should, we have to start first with the business owners, getting the business owners on board.
If, if you read the, read the report, as you say you have, uh, one of the things that's here is focus, whoever is the successful person who gets the, the project will do focus groups with the different stakeholders, some being the business owners, some being the, the people who own the properties, some being maybe potential developers, such as that, so it's, it's in there.
Yes, Mayor, I, I got a problem with that, too, because I don't think we need to do that.
Well, it's, it's been referred back to the committee of the whole already, so...
Yeah, I mean, we could talk about it then, but I just think we've done other things over, we've implemented a lot of the plans over the years.
We haven't, we, we, there's nothing in anything we've ever accomplished, just so believe it, that this, that's told us, given us procedure, how to implement this plan and get it going, uh, and it, so we don't have anything to show us how, plus the fact that we don't have people to do that, and also, it's, it's not gonna cost us anything to go out for a proposal, did, you know, we're asking people to make proposals, to, to come back with some ideas, and maybe some, these people will have new ideas that we don't have.
I, I mean, that, this...
I mean, that's just, all this is asking for people to give us proposals.
I just want to say that the scope of that, because we've had five of these plans over the last twenty-five years.
None of, none of them been like this to them, Mike.
Yeah, but we have a lot of the things, I mean...
This is implementation plan.
I've got some of them here.
I have them all.
I know.
But none, none, nowhere, nowhere any of those plans is to tell you how to get the thing done.
Look, we, we were gonna defer back to committee, so I'll just, I'll drop them.
Okay. All right. Uh, anything else?
No, that's all from my report.
All right. Recreation, Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Alderman, uh, Clifford, road destruction?
Just an announcement that next, uh, next week's, uh, Roads and Construction Meeting will be at six PM instead of six-thirty for the purpose of a road assessment presentation. Uh, that's the, uh, assessments we had done on all the roads, the gentleman needs some extra time. I sent an email to all, uh, Alderman, so that'll be at six, uh, six o'clock next week for road assessment, uh, presentation for the upcoming, that's it.
If, if you have time, that's a very cool thing, it tells you how, what the condition of every road in town.
It's, uh, got a lot of info in there.
Yeah.
They did, uh, just about everywhere around the city, and we got a good grab on it, and we got a very good high rating on how our roads are now compared to other suburbs, so we're doing well.
Good.
That's it.
All right. Alderman Lewandowski does not have a, he's not here, first of all, but he has gotten a report, so let's go right into water and sewer, Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, number sixteen, I'd like to make the motion to approve payment number seven, approval to, uh, counting at city plumbing for the water meter replacement program in the amount of, uh, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, seconded by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Thank you, I'd like, uh, number seventeen, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of one hundred, one and a half inch meters and one hundred Smart Point Touch Couplers from Core and Main for the meter replacement program in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, seconded by Alderman Key, any discussion, roll call?
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Uh, number eighteen, I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the, of, uh, the backflow inspection notification and data management with Backflow Solutions Incorporated in the amount of four hundred and ninety-five dollars annually. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, seconded by Alderman Key, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion carries.
Thank you. Number nineteen, I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number one for an additional eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents above the original contract price of the Misty Meadow exterior overcoat for the expansion joint brackets for the board and new gaskets and bolts for the wet interior manway. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, seconded by Alderman Key, I won't even ask you to explain what that is, so...
It's pretty, pretty interesting, if you go over there and watch them, it's, uh, it's very interesting. Right now, there's a big, like, I don't know, add them what they call it, but there's a big thing that wraps around the water tower, you can't even see the water tower, and there's other times where guys are hanging from the edge, it's interesting.
Yeah. Roll call?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes. Thank you, and number twenty, we'd like to make a motion to award the three hundred thousand gallon ground level storage tank to Dami Mechanical Industries Incorporated for their lowest bid in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, seconded by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Thank you, and number twenty-one, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services with RJN Group for the twenty-twenty-five sanitary sewer rehabilitation and the twenty-twenty-five on-call underground infrastructure services, rendering through March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and four cents. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, seconded by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Thank you, and finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services with Strand Associates Incorporated for the one hundred and thirty-first Street Water Main Linings and College Drive Water Main Linings and On-Call Services, rendering through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, seconded by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Uh...
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes. Uh, that's it for my report.
You spent two million dollars on it.
It's enough out of you.
All right. This is an economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow at eight o'clock in the municipal parking lot, the, uh, farmers market starts up for the year, so please come out and, and support that, uh, farmers market, and that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Cable TV, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I'd like to point the citizens' attention to the, uh, channel TV four, uh, scrolling calendar of all the goings-on and announcements without, throughout the city, uh, beginning for the early summer. Uh, there's also on the YouTube channel, uh, a, uh, nice, uh, interview with our good mayor, talking about our, all of our, uh, uh, initiatives and in, and efforts underway for the enhancement of the city, uh, and also, I should be prepared at this time, uh, uh, next, uh, uh, council meeting to discuss the budget for Channel Four. That's all for my report.
All right. Any old business?
I have one issue.
Yes?
Um, Mayor, it's actually probably new business, but I thought I'd interject it here, just with what we have going on tonight. I just wanted to announce on behalf of the Arts Palest Heights that the Public Arts Commission has collaborated with Palest Park Author and Creator of the Do Good, Do Good Movement, Aaron Stevenson, and so there's a, um, a, a display over at the, at Lake Catherine at the, the far end, um, in the children's forest, and, um, you can do yoga poses, and there's story walk and all that, so it's a good little thing to check out, we just want to make sure that everyone's attention is drawn to that area of Palest Heights, or of, of, of Lake Catherine.
Do you, uh, make, get it on, or media, public media's, uh, social media?
It, there is, um, it's, it's on the Arts, um...
Okay.
Palest Heights Facebook page, too, as a reference point, but I think that you can kind of like follow around, there's like the pages of the book are all laid out, and you can do tree poses and different, different fun stuff.
I saw pictures of it, it's really cool.
Very cute, so I just want to encourage people to go down there and see it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, it should have been on Communications, but just to let you know that Memorial Day is coming up and a service here at City Hall, of which Alderman Key has graciously agreed to play taps again with his vintage bugle, which we appreciate.
He's the only one that's got a bugle, that's why.
We're lucky we got a guy that can play it. The thing is, I was asked, uh, again, to get a honor guard to post the colors out at City Hall, and as the veterans are getting older, they're going by the wayside or passing away, and they're getting fewer and fewer, I call the local high schools, and they're not able to do it, I just got a call back from Shepherd, they're, it's the end of the school year, so they're gone. So, anybody that's interested, they want to carry a flag out just to post the colors, I'll do it myself, probably get Alderman McGrogan if we get down to it, just need four people, so, and, anyway, you don't have to have served in the, in the military or anything like that, but if you get ahold of me and let me know, so I can let the Commander Allen know, see, put it on the program.
Great, thanks a lot.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Any other old business? Citizens wishing to ask any questions about the business tonight? All right, under new business, we have the swearing-in of, uh, the elected officials, uh, the Honorable, uh, Christopher Waller. Chris is a local resident besides...
Yes, we found my brother.
Very handy.
I, Robert Strauss.
I, Robert Strauss.
Having been duly elected as mayor of the City of Palest Heights.
Having been duly elected as mayor of the City of Palest Heights.
In the County of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution.
That I will support Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully and impartially...
I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, state your name.
I, Shannon Hervey.
Having been duly appointed as city clerk.
Having been...
Duly.
Elected. Elected.
Elected as city clerk.
Elected as city clerk.
In the city of Paleus Heights.
In the city of Paleus Heights.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I, state your name.
I, James Demicki.
Having been duly, duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
As treasurer of the city of Paleus Heights.
As treasurer of the city of Paleus Heights.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.